Okay, okay. All right, so I'm going to call the meeting to the order and this is regularly scheduled meeting of the Harvest City Commission which is duly posted, and call on Commissioner Ruben Tellaro to give us an invocation, make it a good one, Commissioner.
I will. Dear Lord, we come before you asking you for your mercy on us to halt the spread of the coronavirus. We pray for those already infected with the coronavirus that they may receive prompt, effective, and compassionate medical care, that we will restore them with health. We pray for your protection and grace for all medical professionals who are courageously treating those infected with coronavirus. May they be shielded, straightened, and guided as they administer healing treatments and care. We pray for your protection over those most vulnerable to the disease, for our babies, our children, our elders, our poor, our disabled, and those weakened by other health conditions. We pray for those under quarantine that they may be comforted by your presence and protected from disease, anxiety, and fear. We pray for our public healthcare leaders and government agencies that they may be informed and well-prepared as they deal with the coronavirus. Grant them the resource and manpower that they need to use wisdom in the best interest of the public health. We pray for researchers who are tracking the course of coronavirus, that they uncover patterns that will help us understand how to stay healthy. We pray for those researching for treatment, cures, and vaccines. May you guide them, revealing new ideas, accelerating their discoveries to fight this disease. We pray for the communities, areas, and countries hardest hit by the coronavirus. Restore their cells of well-being, community, sustain them, comfort them, and give them hope. We pray for all of those lives that are disturbed by the coronavirus. We pray for families who have been separated, and for those livelihoods that have been jeopardized. We look to you, oh God, praying that the spread of the coronavirus will be halted and that many lives may be spared. We pray that this crisis may dawn closer to you, grow our compassion, and increase our knowledge. Thank you that you are the great physician who not only heals us, but who is only present to help in our time of need. As the Bible tells us, "You took up all the infirmities and carried our diseases." Matthew 8:17. Thank you for hearing our prayers. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's proceed. And as part of my welcome this evening, I'd like to say a few words about the meeting format. As we go forward, as you all know, the governor has suspended certain provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act to allow us to reduce the number of people in the room to that required by the CDC guidelines. So there may be some other opportunities for us to give options for teleconferencing. We do have to livestream the meeting, and we have to give an opportunity for public comment, as we will continue to do. There'll probably be a new, a different method at at least the next few meetings where we'll be inviting the public to sign up via email, or to register their comments via email, and then to call in and to, and be heard on a public, on a phone system that where everyone can hear what's going, what's being said. So those things are going to be implemented. We continue to work very closely. You'll hear a presentation on what the city is doing to do its part to manage the coronavirus and to work jointly with the federal, state, and county government to ensure that we're doing everything that we can do to implement locally in our city things to stop the spread of the virus. We're also, in this welcome, encourage people not to, not to panic buy. There's really no need for that. There's, there's been no indication on any level that the food supply is going to run out, or they're not going to be able to supply the grocery stores, and so that you don't inconvenience your neighbors, your friends, and your families. We want you to just buy what you need for a few days or for the week, like you would normally, and then go back to the store. The other thing that we ask you to do is to, is even while, not to go to rest, not to go into restaurants and bars to eat, but please do buy food from restaurants. That's part of our food supply chain, and we need to make sure that people are buying from our restaurants. Keeps those businesses open. It's also part of the food supply chain. They can continue to receive products through their own suppliers, and, and, and all we have to do is either go through the drive-thru, call ahead and pick it up, or have them deliver. And so those are things that we can do to actively manage this. So I want to thank everyone for their cooperation. It's been a busy, the last seven days have been quite busy, and I've been on the call, I've been on calls with the county judge and the governor, three different calls during the day today as we continue to advance through this. So, as, and there was a last-minute call that was arranged at 5 o'clock by the governor as Gabe off, as Gabe off the phone. So we're gonna, so we started that call at 5:00, and I stayed as long as I could, and the city manager stayed as long as he could, Josh, and I have Gabe downstairs right now listening to the rest of the call. He's going to be part of this coronavirus presentation, so we're going to move that down a little bit. But right now, I'm going to ask, go ahead and ask for citizen communication. So I'll ask the first person. Rudy, is there any way you can man your camera, the rear camera to step away from, can you move, or do you have to stay at that camera?
While they're doing the, that, the citizen communication, I have to be on this one.
Okay.
The rest of the meeting I'll leave to that.
All right, all right. When we finish that, I'd like to ask you to move to the rear, back to the back.
Ron was on the wait drive line here.
Okay. Next.
We have Ramiro Sanchez.
Ramiro Sanchez?
Yes.
I live at 1106 South Palm Card Drive. I've been here 13 years. I'm an ex-police officer, and I, also a founder of an association, Southwest Tow Operators. We train all the, all the tow truck drivers. We do everything. We certify them. I, I'm sick, and I, my wife has got cancer. I'm, I take 34 pills, and I wanted to do something for my city, where I live now, my home, and, and what I'm doing is charging a governmental fee for every individual that we pick up in the tow trucks. Any police officer that picks up any car, you're charging a governmental fee. That money goes to, we collect the money as a tow truck. We give it to the, the police department. They, they charge a $10, a $20 administrative fee, and that's 70, that's $95. Concha's doing it, Riondo's doing it, Brownsville's doing it. I've, I've been to, Alamo is doing it, and they're making money. And this is, instead of charging the taxes to us, you should charge the, you know, this is the best way of making money for the police department. If you give the police department that money and put it in their funds, they'll make more, the kids will go out there and work harder. I promise you that. The other thing is, we haven't had a rate in 20 years or 30 years. I've also got a document there from Brownsville. They have changed their rates. They have doubled our insurance. The big companies have been charging us, I paid $16,000 three years ago. I'm paying $38,000 now. We need a raise. And I give you the copy of Brownsville PD, what they're charging now, what they're charging, and...
Okay, Mr. Sanchez, we'll have the city staff look into your request and, and...
I can, I can talk to anybody and sit down with anybody.
Okay. If you haven't left your contact information, please do. Next.
We have Robert Lutwitz. Robert?
Did he say what he's signing up for?
Mayor, Commissioner, my name's Robert Lutwitz, 909 East Parkwood, Harlingen, Texas. Obviously, we've got a problem that's going on with the coronavirus, and I just want to get to the point. I think there's some things that the city needs to consider doing to help the citizens in terms of economics. First of all, with waterworks, right now, I think we have a overly excited termination or disconnect policy, and I would propose to you guys that y'all consider waiving some of that, maybe adding another week or 10 days to the disconnect policy that the city, the Harlingen Water Works has, because there's going to be a lot of people. Obviously, you go to a restaurant now where, you know, some of them are at 50% occupant or capacity for serving. Lobbies are closed, so we're seeing a lot of service people that aren't, aren't going to be employed. I don't have to, you know, tell you guys that, that you know that's going to happen. So I just ask that you just look at the waterworks, disconnect policy, give people some time, other things that, that can be done to allow people to pay a little bit later, or maybe make payment more, you know, loosen up some payment arrangements on some of the things that are due to the city. The other thing is that as we approach the tax season again, I'd like to see this, this commission, mayor, y'all propose to the county that they not renew the Port of Harlingen tax. I just came out, I just came from out there, and there's probably 100 petroleum trucks out there looking to pick up petroleum to go into Mexico. Why they can't operate the Port of Harlingen on revenue from these multi-billion dollar or international petroleum companies without having to subsidize with City of Harlingen taxpayer money, I don't know why they can't. And I suggest that as we did, or as y'all did with the free port exemption tax, where y'all asked the county to eliminate that tax for the benefit of the corporate, corporations that did business at the Los Indios Strait Bridge, I ask that you do the same thing with the Port of Harlingen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And the next?
We have Eduardo Lopez. He's in for it. He's in for it. Is he here for a resoning item?
Okay, all right. Can Fernando not watch the proceedings down? Can he not?
Yes, he can watch it and hear it.
Downstairs, okay. Well, I mean, I'm not, I just want to make sure he's got access to it if he wants it. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna wait a few minutes on the coronavirus presentation, go to item two, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 4th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor.
I, I had a question on item seven, and I want to know if we, can we take that out of?
That's not part of the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry, the blocks are in the whole front.
Yeah, it's confusing.
It's pretty rough a little bit.
Item 3A and 3B, we have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item four, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow adult business in a general retail district located at 2222 South Expressway 83 Suite 505, bearing a legal description of 2.7, 2.5783 acres out of the west, 10.34 acres of lot hand one, block 24, Launcey Hill subdivision, African Towne account two. And this is, do we know which, which item that Mr. Lopez was here?
It's for number six.
Number six?
It's for number six.
Number six, okay.
May I ask a question, Mayor? Do people have to sign up for the public hearing portion of the, of the agenda four, five, and six?
No.
If not, can we at least let people know that, you know, can everybody, is everybody downstairs, or are there people up here that can't hear? I, I just want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, since it is a public hearing, that they know that we're reading this right now.
That we're on number four.
Once the mayor opens a public hearing?
Yes, sir. Thank you. That's all I want to make sure.
We'll get it out.
Okay.
Okay. Javier, go ahead.
Yes, we have an application for an SUP for microblading. This is at the corner of FM 1479 and Expressway 77 in a commercial plaza. It's on this general retail district. That's the location where they want to, the suite where they want to put the microblading studio. That's an aerial photograph, it's mostly commercial all around, some single family residential to the, to the west side. The SUP was reviewed and approved by the older departments. Staff recommends approval subject to the conditions that they maintain the off-street parking, maintain the landscaping, obtain all the proper state permits, and comply with all the requirements by planning, building inspections, fire prevention, police department, and obtain a certificate of occupancy. The Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on March 11. No one spoke in opposition, and the commission approved it unanimously, 5 to 0, 5 to 0.
Okay, item A, it's a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Ask if anyone would like to speak for or against this, this special use permit.
Are you here for item number four?
She's the applicant.
She's the applicant. So you can speak for or against, they opened up a public hearing.
She's in favor.
Okay, is she here on this item?
Yes, she's the applicant.
She's the applicant.
Right. So, ma'am, would you like to speak for the special use permit? Okay.
It's his side.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against the issuance of this special use permit?
Is this a one-year?
Dan is checking right.
Okay, hang, hang on. Let me, just, is he checking to see if there's been anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else who wants to speak for or against?
No, sir.
All right, close, close the public hearing. Go to item B, which is the consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow adult business in a general retail district located at the above location, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
May I ask, Mayor, is this a one-year, sir?
No, but it could be an additional condition if desired.
No, what's normal, I just want to know what...
They're just approved subject to the conditions, but if there's any problems, they could be revoked.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead.
... amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to timely can two salines to allow adult business microblading studio in a general retail district located at 2222 South Expressway 83, Suite 505, subject to, one, maintaining the existing off-street parking, two, maintaining the existing landscaping, three, obtain and maintain the proper state permits, and four, compliance with the requirements administered by the planning and development department, building inspections department, fire prevention department, police department.
Yes, sir. Is there a motion to adopt the?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item five, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow storage container in a light industry district located at 2809 East Grimes, bearing a legal description of all of industrial park subdivision block number two, and all of industrial park subdivision block number six. African is the dish network.
Yes, we have some special use permits for storage containers. They're using them to store furniture for the company at the corner of Grimes and 25th Street. At the time of the application, they had, the zoning is like industrial. At the time of the application, they had a four storage container, but as of today, they're down to two, and late this month or early next month, they're going to remove all of them. But this, they received an notice of violation, so they applied for the special use permit to have time to remove them. But they are in the process of removing them.
Okay, is there, we go to the public hearing. Item A, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this SUP for the storage container? All right, there being no one who is asking to speak on the public hearing for this, item five, close the public hearing. Go to item B, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a storage container in a light industry district located at the above location. Ask the city attorney to read the caption.
... amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to allow a storage container in a light industry district located at 2809 East Grimes, subject to, one, the SUP will be for one container and will be valid for no more than 90 consecutive days. Two, the other three containers will be to be removed from the premises. Three, the storage container must be located in the rear of the property and must be screened from ordinary fellow view by appropriate means, including fence, gravel, growing trees, or shrubbery. Four, compliance with the requirements administered by the planning and zoning, fire prevention, and building inspections departments.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item six, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from light industry district to general retail GR district for lots 1 through 16, block 1, lots 1 through 12, block 2, lots 1 through 23, block 3, and lots 1 through 9, block 4, Harlingen North Business Center subdivision located on the east side of Expressway 77, south of Loop 499.
This is a resoning request. This is on, along the expressway, close to where Business 77 and Expressway 77 converge. This is a subdivision that was developed in 2007 for industrial purposes, but unfortunately, there has been no interest to develop for, develop subdivision for that purpose. So, so the applicant is requesting a resoning to general retail district, mostly to develop, well, businesses and apartments. So they applied for all the lots to be changed to general retail district. As you can see, there's the existing zoning is light industrial for all the lots. The planning and zoning commission had concerns that if all the lots are sold general retail districts, then you could potentially have apartments real close to the expressway. So they had, they had concerns about that. And then they also had concerns that businesses could develop in the, kind of in the rear of the property, not close to the expressway. So they came up, the planning and zoning commission came up with an alternative resoning, which is to leave the first two rows as light industrial, which will allow commercial, but not apartments. So leave, leave those the way they are now, to allow this, the third and fourth rows to so, disown to general retail district, which will allow businesses and apartments, and then the remaining lots to be sold multifamily residential, which will allow the apartments, but not businesses. And the applicants were in agreement with the, with the alternative recommendation. That's a picture of the site, narrow photograph. No one spoke in opposition, and the planning and zoning commission recommended approval for, with a 4 to 1 vote of the alternative resoning.
Who was the holdout?
Mr. Consiglio.
Consiglio, okay. Can you go back to the map, the agreed upon map? Just so I can understand. I, I had a hard time following this. So, but there's not enough property to develop on the south side of the yard?
Let's go ahead and let, if we're going to discuss it.
Yes, sir.
You know, typically, we go first the public hearing to allow, and then, and then let the commi...
No problem.
And I don't care if y'all want to ask questions now.
Not mine, so...
But let's go ahead and let Mr. Lopez end, if we're, if we're going to discuss, if we're going to discuss it.
It'd probably be best that we hear from him anyway.
Okay, so this is the public hearing part of the agenda item, and so where we ask if there's anyone who would like to speak for or against this resoning. So would you like to speak for or against it?
I can, I can speak for, for.
Okay, if you would step up to the microphone and state your na, state your name and your residence.
My name is Jorge Arango. We own that property...
And your residence address?
My residence, I live in McAllen.
That's okay, just tell us what your address is.
603 South McColl Circle.
Okay, thank you.
In McAllen, in McAllen. Yeah, that's a property we acquired back in 2007, I believe it is. For whatever reason, my wife was the one who purchased it, and she passed away 2012. And, you know, that's a, it's a big property, it's a beautiful property, and been thinking, you know, what can we do with it? And when it was first built, they were thinking of warehouses, and since, I've had it in the market for a long time, at a great expense to us, and nothing's happening. So we approached the economic development here in Harlingen. They were very nice, and, you know, throwing ideas, and we all thought that if we can change the designation, we might be thinking of multifamily, not, not private homes, multifamily. We went to Brown and Leo, the engineers. They were, you know, they are, they, they thought it was a good idea, a very good idea. That's ready to go. That's, there's an event that, you know, and that's an investment of close to $2 million with, with all of the infrastructure that you have there. So, and it's been, you know, what are we going to do? So, we thought that was the idea. We've consulted with you guys, and this is my third time here. Last time, they, they kind of liked it. They came with different definitions. The idea was then to, you know, how you have it now? That's so that the blue part cannot be, just to make sure that that's not a home. I guess that's the designation where, you know, for sure that's going to be commercial. So...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone else like to speak for or against this, this resoning? We want to let him remain in here while we have the discussion.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. So, so item B is consideration. So we'll, we'll just go ahead and call the item. We'll have her read the caption, then, then if you, we can talk about it before anybody makes a motion. Consideration, possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone from Light Industry LI District to General Retail District for lots one through sixteen, block one, lots one through twelve, block two, lots one through twenty-three, block three, lots one through nine, block four, Harlingen North Business Center subdivision located at the above location. Ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
The ordinance submitting the code of ordinances, City of Harlingen rezoning from Light Industry LI District to General Retail GR District for lots three and four, block one, lots three and four, and lot ten, block two, and lots three and four, block three, Harlingen North Business Center subdivision, and rezoning from Light Industry LI District to residential multifamily, two district, for lots five and six, five through sixteen, block one, lots five and six, and eleven and twelve, block two, lots five through twenty-three, block three, and lots one through nine, block four, Harlingen North Business Center subdivision located on the east side of Expressway Seventy-Seven, south of Loop four ninety-nine, providing for location and ordinating other matters related to the ordinance.
All right.
So my question was, I was kind of confused with all the going back and forth. Is the brown existing M two?
No. Everything right now is on light industrial.
That's what I thought. So right now, we're only considering the red portion?
So the way the planning and zoning can recommend is leave, leave these lots light industrial.
Correct.
Which will not allow apartments.
Correct.
Proceed, allow the rezoning to General Retail District as requested for these lots, which will allow businesses and apartments.
Correct.
And then not, to allow, instead of, instead of retail, to change these lots to, to multifamily, which will only allow apartments and not businesses.
But right now, we're not considering the multifamily at all?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the ordinance.
I don't see it.
Yeah, it's, it's part of the cap-
I don't see any, anything there about an M two. All I see is GR. And I want to make sure we... And so my only concern I had is, on the south end, you have a fifty-foot by seven-hundred? Am I incorrect?
Is there anything in the caption about M two?
Yes.
There is. I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I have a question.
Well, hold on, hold on. I hadn't finished yet. So it is, that's, that is in the caption?
It's, it's in the ordinance, yes.
So, the, the strip that's seven-hundred by fifty? Right now, if you look at the aerial map, they're using that for parking?
For parking.
So is, so that strip, is that the irrigation ditch, or is that?
That is right adjacent to John Deere, part of the property. So they, they go, they went into our property, they've been there for a couple of years.
Correct.
Have done nothing about it.
Correct.
But that is a very, it might look a bit wide. It is not. It is, there's a ditch right there.
Fifty feet.
There's nothing to do, nothing. There's nothing.
So my only question is, is if John Deere wanted to buy that and use that, buy it being M two, we're gonna have to go through all this all over again.
Well, their plan is, because this is part of this lot.
I know it is. Oh, it's part of one lot.
Is this, is part of this lot. Their, their plan is to split, to go through the subdivision process and split this into two lots, and to sell this lot.
I'm good. My, my question has got answered. Okay. Thank you.
That's their plan.
That, that, my only concern is you having to come back again.
Okay. Commissioner, did you have a question? Commissioner Rubio?
Yes, I did. The gentleman spoke and said that he's come three times already. Why, why was it denied before? When was the last?
No, it's because the planning and zoning commission tabled it, because they had that concern about, about residential going in here and commercial coming in here. So they tabled the items so we could meet with the applicant, and that's why.
But he said he's been there three times. It, it-
It's two days, it's a third, yeah. Two times with the planning and zoning-
Just one, one request?
One request.
Okay, I got you.
It's just two meetings with the planning and zoning commission.
So it has, it has never been denied?
No.
You've just been going through the process of, of, okay. I got you.
With that, a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like side, motion carries. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve a service contract between City of Harlingen and UniFirst Corporation for uniform rental and laundering services for the city employees, and authorize city manager to sign the contract.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm here before you to ask for approval for the service contract between the city and UniFirst Corporation for the laundering of approximately one hundred and thirty employees throughout the city and various departments. The program includes providing eleven to thirteen sets of brand-new uniforms for employees, weekly pickup, laundering, delivery, and repair as needed for the term of three years.
So I had a question because I, I called earlier, I talked to the city attorney, because I got approached by kind of one of the competitors saying that they didn't get an opportunity to get, and, and they're on the byboard.
They're on the byboard.
So they emailed, this, this is the story I got, that they were emailing the city because they knew it was coming out, and they said, no, it's, it's not gonna, not gonna get put out, or what. So they never got a chance to follow it. And they're, they're saying it didn't go to the byboard, because they're a part of the byboard. So I, I did reach out to Dan and asked him, you know, what happened, and-
We, I mean, we are part of the byboard, and we do have a byboard contract number five eighty-seven, but I can, I can definitely look into it, but I-
Yeah, because I don't, I don't feel comfortable approving it if, I mean, if, if it's not going through the process of, that, that byboard is supposed to take care of itself, and-
Right. So the byboard is like a cooperative, and they go out and do the bidding and, and get the best possible price. So, and I believe that there are like, are options possibly on, on the byboard, so you could go with the lowest-
Because that company's adamant that they're much cheaper, and, and they're on, they're, they're trying to, they've been trying to do business with Horns forever, and they're trying to go through the process. They went on part of the byboard, and then we're given that opportunity.
Right. And, and we do, also, we consider the, the lowest price, but we also consider the quality and the service that, that's provided. So I, I could go back and look at the analysis that, that was performed to see how they were selected, but, but there are other factors than just the price that we consider.
So, so, so are they more expensive?
I, I could go back and look. I, I wasn't part of that selection process, but it goes through like, the byboard process of, for selection.
Okay. Because then I, I would like to table the item and, and bring it back, and really just to make sure that, because this is, again, this is a company that's been trying to, and, and, and it's the same, it's a local company. They're, they're, they're also here in Horns and doing business.
Right.
You know, so, so I'd like to, to make a motion, we tabled the item, just to get those answered, to make sure we're following the right process, because I like being part of the byboard, because I, I believe it protects us, but if it's not being followed, then, and it's a three-year contract.
I think when you're, whenever you are part of the byboard, like, I'm not, I guess I don't understand when you say like, you're not, when it's not being followed. When you're part of the byboard and there, there are selection options, I mean, that's, that's part of the federal compliance of, of state, you know, procurement require, requirements.
Okay. Commissioner, what, well, there's, there's a motion to table, so is there a second on the motion to table?
I missed it.
I want to table it. Uh, seven, because I'm getting calls that-
No, there's no, no discussion on a motion to table. There's no discussion on a motion to table.
I want a mo-
There's a motion, you just made, move the table, and then there, if somebody seconds it, then there's a vote on it, but there's no discussion. So we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I just want more information. I just want more information on, on-
Okay. What, what, okay. I'm not hearing a second on the motion to table. What is the, what is the additional?
I may be a little confused. No, 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 no. I, I hear what you're saying. I'm confused in how the byboard works. Why don't you-
Sure. So we, we are part of, we're a member of several purchasing cooperatives in the state. One is byboard, one is HGAC, Houston Galveston area, one is TexMoss, one is Tips and Taps, school district uses them a lot. So what the state does is they put out these services, out for bids, and they go through a bidding process. And so once that process is completed, we as members and as participants in those programs, and those programs are approved by the city commission, then we can go to a particular vendor that's on byboard and simply get a quote from that vendor and not go through the entire bidding process of advertising and, and go through the expense and time-consuming process of going out for bids. We can simply piggyback off what the state has done and simply go to that particular vendor. And I believe that's what, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what we've done in this case, right?
That's correct. Yeah. So they basically go out and do the whole bidding process, so we don't have to go out and do the bidding process, and it, it's an acceptable, uh, straight procurement requ-
So you're saying we're being legal in what we do?
Absolutely, sir.
Well, no, but, but here's, but here's, but if I understand you correctly, then, then what the other companies tell me is correct, that they are cheaper, they didn't get a chance to bid it out, because you didn't ask them, you didn't ask them, just because you went straight to UniFirst and said, you know, I want to do business with you again.
Well, I, I don't know who the other company is, Commissioner, or that they're cheaper. I don't know the bit. I, I have no idea.
And that's what I'd like to ask for.
Okay. So Commissioner, you've been approached by, uh-
A local company.
You've been approached by a local company, they're saying, hey, uh, they're saying, telling you that there was-
Is this local company on the byboard?
Yes. And they, and they did not get an opportunity to bid on it. And, and what they're telling me is they contacted the city and trying to get information, you know, to, to, to be able to-
I know, yeah. It's already done.
So, again, I would just like to see, again, if you went with, with company A instead of company B, and company A is much more expensive, you know, why, why are we not trying to save money? And they're, they're both equal in their service or their requirements, because they're also state-regulated and whatnot, and they're big companies, and they're very competitive. My opinion, the objective of a byboard is to make sure we're getting the best possible price. And if we're not following that, that procedure a hundred percent, it's like we're circumventing it.
Okay.
And, and again, the state follows very strict procurement processes.
So are you accusing the city of not following the, the federal and state rules?
No, I think he's got, I think he's got it. No, I think somebody has approached the commissioner and said, we didn't get a, we didn't get an opportunity to participate. And I, so maybe, maybe we should table the item, just to find out if this company is on the byboard, and i- if they're qualified. Turns out they're not qualified, then that's-
That's a whole different thing.
That's a different situation, and so he's just asking for more information. I think it would probably, maybe we should table.
So, so if I second his motion, is still, the motion's still available for-
No, he's just, he needs to make it again, because it died earlier for lack of a second. So make it again.
Okay. I like the motion to table, so we can get some more information.
Okay. Second, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
So item eight is consideration and possible action to allow the mayor to approve an interlocal agreement between the Harlingen Police Department and Cameron County Emergency Communications District to accept three programmed laptops to have remote dispatching abilities. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is an agreement we've been working on for a little while with the Cameron County Emergency Communications District. And basically, what it is, is they're providing us with three laptops that are fully programmed, so we can do remote dispatching in the event our dispatch center goes down, or for special events. It allows for three stations, that's why there's, there's three. Rare case that the, the dispatch center went down completely. We could use these to stand up a, a separate dispatch center, probably out of our incident command or elsewhere if need be.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about this?
Any cost?
There is a cost where we have to insure the laptops, just to make sure there's no damage or anything like that, but they do all the upkeep, and we, we just take care of them.
Negligible.
Yes.
Sounds like a good deal. All those, is there a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like side, motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the City of Harlingen and South Texas Emergency Care Foundation for coordination of increased capacity of emergency communications and dispatch resources. This is the item of Mr. Rubio's. I don't want to, uh, so let's let he, let's let him come in.
We're gonna wait, Mayor?
You can go ahead. Chief, you can go ahead and, and make the presentation.
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. We have before you here an MOU between the City of Harlingen and STEC, South Texas Emergency Care Foundation for our communication backup service for the primary PSAP for the City of Harlingen. The party recognized and advances having a unified dispatch communication system capable of improving and maintaining the service, service level of the City of Harlingen. This, I also add, is in support of our ISO. Once we get this survey for the city, they look at the communication services here for our city very, very closely, and this is why, the reason that we want to be able to bring this forth. I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Rubio?
Yeah. So, or for, for the chief, the ISO survey, as, as the city manager had explained to me, is an inspection process that's done with all the departments, or all the, or some of our facilities, correct?
That's the insurance services office that comes down, and they, they rate your city, and they look at four or five basic areas, fire and, and location, station, locations, equipment, fire prevention, water supply, and communications very closely for the City of Harlingen in this case. And they were there, scheduling to come here to the City of Harlingen to do the next ISO rating for us.
And they're, and they're scheduled to do that when?
They were scheduled to be here April the sixth, but because of the situation we're dealing with, this coronavirus, they have agreed to postpone it further down the next month and a month and a half or so, we're hoping. Once we, so it'll give us time to be able to handle the situation we're dealing with right now.
So, so we've never had a memorandum of understanding until, we're gonna, is this what this is for, or how have we been doing it in the past?
The, the last time they were here, the practices and what we've had set up here in the City of Harlingen with the EMS calls coming in to the nine-one-one center, and then getting transferred to the STEC Communication Center, and that, they automatically take over with the Communication Center at STEC. What we're trying to show ISO is because of that happening, it affords us an opportunity like having additional dispatchers at the comp center that would afford us a more of an opportunity to get a better rating going forward with the-
Having the sec, having the sec, the secondary backup gives us a better-
Rating.
Chance, a better rating with the ISO.
The, the PSAP in itself, but more, more importantly, the, the less work that the dispatchers have to do once they transfer the call. That's in the way they work, we gotta show that through, that we have that setup, and allow us to have a backup also for nine-one-one.
So I, I don't know if, I know we spent a bunch of money upgrading our comp center here in the last, chief, the last year and a half or so. Is, is what they have compatible with what we have? We're not gonna have to do any upgrades, or is it, it costs us anything? Is there any, is there any interruption of that?
No, I don't. There's no interruption. It's, this is more just the formality of the agreement. We've sort of operated informally.
Because you're kind of doing it now, anyway, right? And, and, and the purpose of putting it together is to get a better rating, or like cheaper insurance, basically?
The, the, the PSAPs are compatible. If we have a major, let's say, a natural disaster, God forbid, then our system goes down over here, that's their backup.
They're all fluid.
Nine-one-one backup.
Okay. I just don't want to approve something, and then you have to upgrade your systems, and, you know, I need a little bit more money.
Right. Basically, what we're doing is-
Actually, it's a huge, it's a huge savings to the City of Harlingen, that South Texas Emergency Care Foundation has the system that we can just glom onto, glam onto, and, and be able to have this backup. So it's a huge benefit to the City of Harlingen.
I was gonna say, and what we've been doing over the last few years is putting everybody on the same platform, so we can have these interfaces. And so all this does is formalize an agreement that we can share resources. Is that correct? That's why the ISO gets better, because now, if something's happening on our system, the South Texas emergency can now kick in and pick that call up.
But they're doing it now already, correct?
And more importantly, again, the ISO rating, because the transfer is, call is made to STEC.
Yeah.
It, or to that system, it allows us to free up the dispatch. That's what we're looking at solely, is the ISO portion of it.
So redundancy in emergency situations is a wonderful thing.
Yes.
May, may I ask, how, does this, maybe this is illegal, is there, does- May, may I ask, uh, how, does this, maybe this is illegal, um, is there, does this do anything with our other contract? With, with, with the EMS? Or is it, it's an addendum or it's a whole separate? It doesn't affect the?
It's an MOU specified.
Oh, it's not a contract, it's a memorandum, okay.
The, uh, good, good afternoon, tough times for everyone, or good evening. I'll give you an example, Commissioner, when we had Hurricane, the systems were designed to have two centers in Harlingen. You're not gonna find that anywhere else in the valley. And when the consultants came here to design the new comm centers back, Colonel Cardon was mayor back then, one of the things that they pointed out to us, we had no reliable backup. If a center goes down or there's a bomb threat and you have to evacuate, you lose your communications. So we designed the system and you're not, in your, uh, Loop 499 station, you have the actual hardware that's owned by Cameron County 911. If you make a call from South Padre Island to 911, or for that matter, from the city of Brownsville to 911, it's gonna hit this building before it goes to those PSAPs. The second backup set of hardware for Cameron County is located at the STEC building. So if someone from South Padre dials 911, it's probably gonna hit that building and go right back to South Padre Dispatch. During Hurricane Dolly, and, and it was all designed for that purpose, so we would have redundant communications. During Hurricane Dolly, uh, Chief called me and said, uh, we're losing our communication center. The generator is failing, it has to be shut down, we will not be able to dispatch. Well, when we designed the center, we designed it that we could go to PD, our PD could come to us and log in. So they said, can we send dispatchers to STEC? We said, send them on. They sent their dispatchers to the MedCom, called MedCom. They signed on at MedCom, the dispatchers continued dispatching. The repairmen came from McAllen, shut down the generator, so that, that comm center was totally in the dark, computers and everything. The police dispatching and fire dispatching was done from MedCom. Once they got it repaired, brought it back up online, and got all the computers back up and running, and it got the system stable, they then left and went back to their routine location. So it's simply that we can go over here, or they can go over here and use their log words because the system is identical, and it was designed that way. So we would never be without appropriate communications in this city. And it has worked very well, uh, I think there's been a couple of other instances. But what was funny about the whole deal, the officers on the street never realized their dispatchers were not sitting up here on Loop 499 because they didn't know. But that system worked so well, there's two high-speed cables. One goes around the east side of Harlingen and one goes around the west side of Harlingen that connects those centers. That was designed for redundancy too. If somebody cuts a cable, we won't lose the redundancy. So it was a fabulous deal, it was designed by some very, very smart people, much smarter than I am. But we do have a fantastic system. And I think the ISO folks, when they were here for the preliminary, could not believe that we had this type of redundancy built in a town of this size.
Okay, is there anyone that'd like to speak regarding this matter, is any other discussion?
Just one more question for the chief. The, the ISO, do they do their ratings every year or is it every?
They, it used to be, just to give you a little brief history on the ISO, it used to be that we would request it, we would set up, call a consultant, assess the city, and then they would, we would fix and adjust, and then we'll call for the ISO. They've since changed that. Anybody that's got an ISO rating of more, it's been more than 10 years, they're automatically coming down, Brownsville, Los Fresnos, South, everybody got hit with this. So this is a change, this has come about this year, just with a phone call, we're coming down. And that's how we found out we were gonna get ISO inspected.
So they don't do this every year, it's every year?
The, now it's.
Whenever you all need.
Unless it's gone more than 10 years, then a lot of the cities in the Rio Grande Valley were waiting on the old system of doing it the way that we were never, nobody was ever notified and everybody got hit with it.
I just asked that because it says here every, it's every two years, the memorandum of?
It's recommended that you do it at least every three or four years. But since there were changes that were coming about here in the city of Harlingen, like additional stations and equipment, Station 2 on Stewart Place and everything else, all that brings better chances and opportunity to get a better rating. That's why the, the decision was made to wait when we approached the city commission, city management back in 2014, just wait and let's see if we can get the station built. That's where we're at.
Got you. So, can I make one? Motion to approve?
Okay.
Yeah, I think it.
All right, who else wants, you wanna speak on this, Mr. Zana?
Uh, Mayor, thank you, I'll learn where I needed to, thanks.
All right.
We have a motion and a second, Mayor.
Motion and a second.
Second?
No, we had, we had a motion.
Oh, you had a motion?
Okay.
I didn't hear it, but okay.
Motion and a second.
To approve?
Any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
I want to thank all three of you for coming together, putting this together. Makes our city great.
Stay safe, guys.
All right, item 10, consideration, possible action to accept the donation of one park bench to the city of Harlingen from Pan America Golf Association, nonprofit organization to be installed with Tony Butler Golf Clubs. I think we can do that. Let's just, we don't need staff. Is there a motion to accept the park bench?
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Unless you didn't want us to accept the park bench out here, we can rescind that.
Thank you.
All right, item 11, consideration, possible action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Harlingen and the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen located at 1209 West Washington Avenue to allow the reciprocal use of their parking areas located at Lancy Hill Park and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
As Mayor, City Commission, um, this agreement here is, is, you know, we've been working with, um, the Boys, Boys and Girls Club, they're doing some improvements to their facility. We're doing the improvements to the, um, Lancy Hill, to the destination park. And so we felt that it was, um, in both the interest of the Boys and Girls Club and the city that we, um, create this agreement so we can share parking. Excuse me, I'm out of breath because I ran upstairs. But, uh, the, um, so, uh, during special events, we can use their parking and vice versa. If, um, the Boys and Girls Club ever have events that they need to use our parking, as long as there's no conflict with the scheduling, um, we've, we've met with, of course, Gerald, and we worked out all the, all the details. But this agreement, of course, will, is a, a, um, agreement to allow us to use one another's parking lot.
I'd like the motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Do we want to do the, is the realtor ready for the presentation?
They can, they're ready.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, um, I'm going to start off tonight's presentation, and Josh and Esmeralda Guajardo from the county are going to, uh, to finish. Uh, this will be a presentation on COVID-19, coronavirus 19. That's a, it's just as ugly as it is, uh, there's a picture of it there. So I'm gonna cover what we're doing as far as the city to provide information out to the public. We've had information on our website, uh, we participated in conference calls with Governor's Office, uh, we placed informational posters around city buildings, and we've also postponed our sisters' concert that was scheduled for April 4th until May 16th. In the govern, in the first governor's call, conference call that we had, Mayor Boswell, Dan Serna, Josh Ramirez, myself, Esmeralda Guajardo, who's here also, participated in the call along with Dr. Emily Prodford, the Regional Medical Director for Department of Health and Human Services with Region 11. And matter of fact, uh, tonight, the mayor and city manager and myself were also in a call with the Governor's Office covering some last-minute information that they wanted to disseminate to the public. This is a copy of our webpage, and if you notice, we've added four bullets. We've highlighted them in blue. Each one of these is strictly for Corona information. And you notice that there's also a video that we posted from the mayor, giving information about the coronavirus itself. If you hit the first button on the webpage, this is what you'll pull up, information about the coronavirus, and each one of these items has a poster in itself, and it's also in Spanish. And it covers things from covering your mouth, covering your, covering your cough, to what to do if you're sick. And some of these things may seem mundane, but there's quite a few people that may have questions about what to do, even touching your face in a, in a situation like this. They estimate that the average person touches their face a minimum of 12 times per hour. It's important to avoid that, even washing your hands. It may seem, uh, an easy thing to do, but one of the things that the CDC points out is that you've gotta wash your hands for at least 20 seconds. And that's, it's in the informational poster. Disinfecting also areas.
So if you sing "Happy Birthday" to me twice, that's 20 seconds?
That's two, I did not know that.
That's a way to tie. You can either count to 20 or you can sing "Happy Birthday" twice.
That's, that's good to know.
Pray the Lord's Prayer.
I like that one better.
Pray the Lord's Prayer, often, wash often.
There you go. And then in case you don't have any hand sanitizer at home, uh, our health director gave us a recipe for creating your own, uh, hand sanitizer recipe, and that's also on our webpage. We also have these posters posted throughout city hall and city buildings. Avoid handshakes, hugs, wash and disinfect hands frequently, and do not attend meetings if you're coughing, sneezing, or ill.
Okay, but it is important for the public to know that, that they have to follow that recipe exact. I saw the, a couple of news things that you get that wrong, it's actually even more harmful than not. So is there a disclaimer on there?
No.
I, I would encourage.
It's, it's science, it doesn't need a disclaimer at that percentage.
Well, I know, but, but there should be some kind of.
The, the one thing, Commissioner, that they spoke about that if you get wrong, it'll be, uh, very unhealthy is the percent of alcohol.
Yes, what I'm, what I'm referring to is you're gonna have that one guy say, you know what? No, it's a little bit better to add more of this or add more of that, and, and.
It has to be a minimum. If, if you buy the 70% isopropyl, use it straight. If you buy the 90% or greater isopropyl, you can dilute it, but just you have to do mathematics to get it down to 70% max.
The news was very adamant about it.
We can look at something about it.
It just doesn't come.
We can, we can do that. If you go to the second button on our webpage, it'll bring you up to this. This is a, a webpage for the State Department of Health and Human Services along with the updates they provide about the virus. If you hit the third button, it'll take you to visual updates from the CDC, and we post this frequently. The fourth button will actually take you to this website where we actually post various articles regarding pet care, uh, information from the CDC. And if you hit the first one, it'll take you to the declaration that the mayor just recently signed. We're also having the Public Information Officer post daily Facebook posts. We have daily press releases, and the MIS department updates the web daily regarding the coronavirus. Uh, this is a, a shot of the city's Facebook page, and this is a copy of the mayor's declaration that he signed yesterday, so that's up on the, on not just our website, but also the Facebook. One of the things to consider is that this is a, a team effort, not just from the public sector, from the private. 60 major retailers are temporarily closing until we can pass through this. Macy's, Bath Body Works and Footworks, uh, Foot Locker are among some of those 60.
JCPenney did that.
Did they? And the one thing about-
Across the country.
About those three is that they're in our mall, so it's gonna impact us here financially. Fast food restaurants are also closing dinahalls, Whataburger, Chick-fil-A, Starbucks and McDonald's. Major sporting events have postponed seasons, NBA, soccer. And then the Dow Jones has lost over nine, now it's over 10,000 points. So that's gonna have a significant impact on the economy. At this point, Josh is gonna take over the presentation.
This is the information that we received from the state epidemiologists that they're communicating with this Mexico, the country of Mexico. So for us, they live along the border, so we can be aware of what's right next door to us. That concern has been whether the borders are gonna be closed or not, we still don't have that information. But this is their, their current status of, uh, this morning, I believe. Yeah, that was, uh, this was the day before yesterday, and this was today, so it keeps increasing pretty rapidly. Uh, the numbers have been increasing as you, as you can see, from the 13th to the 14th, they're, you got 26 to 41 confirmed, and then we have 53 confirmed cases. The most current one, uh, yesterday, 93 cases. But the disease is spreading pretty rapidly through the country of Mexico.
Sir, can I ask you a real quick question?
Yes.
I, I see the numbers and I've heard enough news that Italy and Europe and these other countries, are they continuing also to see the growth of it? I know they're, they're hard hit, uh, that there's a large, there was a large impact. Are those continuing to multiply as well, growing every day? Or are they kind of tapped out and they're reducing or?
They're, they're saying that they've seen a decrease due to the orders that they have about. They're confined pretty much, everybody.
Everybody's on shutdown.
Everybody's on shutdown, everybody's confined to their.
So that, that's, that's like a positive.
Social distancing is.
I just want to know that, you know, is it still growing like a fire over here and it's?
Right, well, because people are not congregated anymore, they're not, they're not gathering, so that stops the spread.
Okay, thank you.
The state of Texas has, uh, as of this morning, they had about 64 cases. I'm sorry, the other slides did not show up. We're currently at 83 cases as of this afternoon. This morning, we're 64, right now, right before 5:00 was, was already 83 and, and increasing rapidly. Uh, this one I'm gonna ask, we can load up the county's webpage? The PowerPoint, I'm sorry. Esmeralda Guajardo, she's the Cameron County Health Administrator, who also represents the, our health authority, who's Dr. Castillo.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Um, I'm gonna make this very quick because I'm sure you guys probably want to get out of here. And so I'm just gonna go over very quickly some of the actions that are, that we're taking, undertaking as part of the response for the COVID-19. And so, um, COVID, apparently, I'm sure everyone wonders like what is, what is coronavirus? And so basically, it's a large family viruses that cause illnesses ranging from common cold to more severe diseases such as MERS and SARS. And the strain, the coronavirus disease, 2019, is a new one that originated in China. And so at this point, following symptoms may, you know, appear within two to 14 days, which are fever, cough, and shortness of breath. So those are pretty much the most common symptoms that we look for when we're trying to determine whether someone does need to get tested or not, which I will talk a little bit about it. Transmission, um, I'm sure, like I said, I don't want to insult intelligence, but basically the same thing, contact with others, you know, that within six feet, the respiratory droplets, personal contacts, such as touching or shaking hands with others or touching an object. Prevention, washing hands frequently, unfortunately, um, that's pretty much the only we can do, is, is practice good hygiene, excuse me. So you avoid touching the hands, the nose, staying home when sick, and covering your cough. A lot of the things that, um, that Gabe, I'm sorry, Gabe's, um, touched on, touched on. And so, um, treatment, there is no specific treatment. So basically, if you get diagnosed with coronavirus, it's one of the situations, almost like the flu, you kind of have to let it run its course, and you have to take care of, take care of the, the symptoms that you're dealing with, you know, pain, fever medications, plenty of liquids, and some bed rest. And there is no vaccine.
Ma'am, I have a question on that.
Sure.
I was told that, um, apparently there was a vaccine created for Ebola, didn't work on Ebola, but they're now testing it on, on this vaccine, having some kind of, some kind of success, maybe not, not real great, but is there any truth to that? And if that's the case, does that help as far as the long-term, uh, about getting a vaccine? Is there any?
Okay, so there's two things I want to point out. First of all, I'm not a doctor, and so I'm not even gonna pretend I'm one. But, but though, I did read about that at some point, honestly, have I been? And the other point I want to make is, because we've been so busy, it's been really difficult for me to keep up with a lot of the, of the.
Ebola.
Yeah, the updates, what they're making, and so, you know, the science behind it.
If, if I could speak to that.
Yes.
Ebola and Marburg occur in Africa primarily, they're hemorrhagic fevers, totally unrelated to coronavirus.
I don't understand, but, but what I understood is that, that whatever vaccine they try to create to fix that?
There's no way. This is a whole different organism.
Okay, well, I, I, I.
It's, it's, it's like we have a polio vaccine, but it doesn't work against anything else.
Right, well, I guess if, if that was.
And, and those are whole, I mean, whole different organisms, hemorrhagic fevers.
Well, okay.
Well, I mean.
All right, let's go ahead, let's.
Yes, there was an article about that, I remember reading it, but you're correct. I mean, there's, there's so much to this, it's so new, that I think people are just trying to find all kinds of solutions, and I think that's probably why. I think that's probably one of them. One of the articles...
They are already testing a vaccine...
Yes.
On live, on patients, volunteers. And, you know, that will just have to run its course. But everybody's saying that a vaccine is still a year to a year and a half off. And so that's not something that's going to be helpful in the near term or for this cycle. And perhaps it might be ready for the next season if there is such, if it turns out that this is seasonal. There is some evidence that it is, but that remains to be confirmed and seen. But I think you should...
I'm sorry.
And also, also in the news, there's a tendency with people with type A blood to get this. And new reports late this afternoon, do not take into the NSAIDs should you get this, napason, motrin, and that whole family.
Okay, go ahead. Ms. Guehardo, please continue.
By all means, ask questions. That's the only way we're going to find things out. But yes, so there is no treatment and there is no vaccine. I'm sorry, no vaccine. You know, and it's unfortunate that the vaccine is what we're pretty much the only way probably going to really truly get out of this. You know, and like the H1N1, they came up with a vaccine pretty quickly. And so we were able to provide the vaccines at that point. But this one, we have a long way to go before we actually have a solution. So, okay. So statistics in the United States, I have a graphic here, but pretty much we're at 7,038 cases, deaths 97, states reporting cases, there's 50. How many cases in Texas? 83, and then just two deaths. As far as Cameron County, and I will discuss this a little bit, a further bit, another slide, but we've tested thus far seven individuals. Luckily, seven have come back negative, and so we're still pending three. Persons being monitored, these are the individuals that initially it started that the state, when it was manageable, and we're still, I want to say it's still manageable, but when it was from the get-go, they were able to identify, okay, a flight came in from China, these are the individuals that came in. They would be able to report that to us, and we would just follow up with them every day to make sure the fever, they have any signs or any signs or symptoms. And so initially, it was top-down, but now more people are actually self-reporting to us because the state, this is getting out of control, obviously, to keep track of every single person that traveled, you know, from, say, Houston to Harlingen. Obviously, they can't tell us, they can't keep up with it. So a lot of people actually self-report, are starting to self-report to us. And so right now, we had 50 people thus far, and 15 have been cleared and 35 are pending. And this is those individuals that we, for 14 days, we get their temperature and check for any signs or symptoms. And if should that change, then we would ask them to get tested. We would try to facilitate that to make sure that they do get tested. So what are we doing in Cameron County to respond to this? So my first priority, and not just mine, but the department's first priority is to ensure the health system's prepared. Hospitals, EMS, medical providers, so those are the initial people that we contacted to make sure that they have everything that they needed and to facilitate the discussion with us because the way it's going, as everywhere, and people were initially going to the hospital. They were automatically going to the hospital, and that's where they were being diagnosed. And that's where we're seeing a lot, actually. Most of the hospitals are calling us, telling us we have someone, they're negative for flu, negative for strep, can we run other kinds, can we try to run the test? So that's what we're working on. The other thing, EMS, what we're trying to do is make sure that people don't show up at their doctor's office, they don't show up at the hospital. And so we've talked, we've talked to EMS techs primarily too, to make sure that if they have a situation that someone calls, that they're prepared to have, they're fully, they have their PPE and they're prepared for it. If someone calls their hotline especially, telling us they don't feel well, then we would call the EMS, let them know, this person at this address, but please make sure you're wearing your PPE. And also, when you do call 911, make sure that they, you tell them that this is a situation. And then, of course, the medical providers, because they're the ones that have sick clients. And so we've been working that out. We've had a lot of issues, which I will talk about in a little bit. And then, of course, the local, state, and federal agencies that we've been in contact from the DA's office, Cameron County DA's office, to make sure that should we ever have to quarantine someone, the process that we're going to go through. So they're facilitating that discussion. And of course, the locals like Josh and other directors, City Brownsville, South Padre Island, to make sure that we're in communication with them, should we ever get a first case. The state, the state health department, that's one of them, and then the federal agencies like Border Patrol, just to make sure that they're there, when people are crossing over, they're making sure that they don't have fever or they're not showing any signs or symptoms. And the other part of what we do is surveillance. And I just talked briefly about patients under monitoring and patients under investigation. And like I said, patients under monitoring, the ones that traveled, and they're not showing signs or symptom, but we want to make sure that for 14 days, because of where they've been, or because they also were in contact to someone that tested positive, but they're not showing signs or symptom. They were in contact to someone that tested positive. Let me clarify that one. And patients under investigation, those that were testing. Now, the testing, and I'm sure you all heard about it, that there's all this discussion that there's not enough testing, they don't have testing kits. And so I'm going to try to explain it best I can. So there's two options right now for people to get tested. One is through the public lab, which is going through us. So if someone goes to their medical provider, the doctor feels that they need to get tested, they will call our office and we'll facilitate that discussion. If, and there's criteria that still needs to be met, and individual still has to have the signs and symptoms. They have to roll out the flu, they have to roll out the strep, they have to do a respiratory panel. So we're, obviously, they meet that criteria. The other thing is if they have a contact to someone and if they traveled somewhere. Because we're not in a position where we can blanket test anyone, there's just no way. We don't want to bog down the system that way. So if you have a doctor that says, I have this patient, meets a criteria, they will contact us, and we will facilitate that discussion with our health authority, Dr. James Castillo. And if he agrees, and Dr. Castillo right now is not one to disagree unless he really believes it needs to be done, but he will literally pick up the phone and talk to that physician, and they will try to roll out everything else before we try to get him tested for COVID-19, only because we don't want to bog down the system. We want to make sure that those people that truly need to be tested are the ones that are getting tested. So that's a private lab. That's a public lab. The private lab is, any physician can, now it's a case. Apparently, like LabCorp, Quest, and CPL, private labs, they started sending out kits to doctors' offices. We don't know, and this is, and this is, we mean, being health directors across, and I can say this is something that's being heard throughout the state, is that we don't know how many kits went out. We don't know who received the kits, which doctors got them and which didn't. I still don't know, and we're having difficulty getting that information. And so these doctors, if they feel that someone walked in, they need to get tested, they will pull it, they will run it through the private lab. You know, to us, it, this is my, the way I explain it, is you have to get from point A to point B. One gets in a car, one goes in a flight, we get there the same, we're going to get the same result. The only two, the only difference is labs need to report to us if someone tested positive. And the other issue, the only concern that I have on that regard is, with the public lab ones, I can tell you right now who the 10 people are. I can tell you everything about them. But with a private lab, I have no control over it. If someone falls between the cracks, that they did, someone did they get the results for a person, I have no control over that. And so I want to put out there, but I will say that if someone really needs to get tested, there is a way to get tested, they just have to call us. And we will facilitate that discussion to make sure that the persons get tested. And my understanding, the South Texas lab, which I know Dr. Pearl was scheduled to come in, but she had to leave, she helps run the South Texas lab, which is a state lab off of Rangerville. She, from what I understand, they have capability now at the Harlingen lab to run up to 40 tests a day. So there's capabilities, just the process that people want to follow to get there. And the other part, of course, the most critical part here is education, because we can do everything we want, and we can try to do everything to try to do this, but if people are not doing anything, the hygiene, then we're still of no purpose. And so we have a hotline, it's 956-247-3650. And so we try to do a little spin on that so people can remember it, the 24-hour, 7-days-a-week 365, and we just add a zero at the end, because we are available 24/7/365. We're there 8 to 5, we're probably going to expand hours more to 7:30 to 7:30 PM. And then after hours, we have an on-call service that'll take the calls, and that will get our epidemiologists on the line with the physician or someone that really needs to get an answer right then and then. And then, of course, key messaging, which are listed there. And then we have our website that has information and the posters. Those posters are available for print, as I see the city of Harlingen took advantage. So thank you. So we put that specifically out for the public, and we broke them down because sometimes, like restaurants, they really focus on washing hands if you go to the restroom. So we try to, we try to design these so that we can target certain audiences. And so what does that leave us? This has been a complete balancing act from working, you know, it's going from 0 to 6, even being a hoax, to all of a sudden, everyone's starting to panic. And so we have to figure out how to find that happy balance, because some people still believe this is not really an issue to deal with, but then you have people that are out there hoarding stuff, toilet paper. And so we need to figure out, we're trying to balance, how do we educate those people so that they understand the seriousness of the situation? And then, of course, the conservative versus reckless. We're being conservative in terms of testing, but we're not being reckless. So we have to make sure that we find that balance. And then the funding versus resources, there's conferences, you know, press conferences going on all the time about all these monies. We haven't received a penny of it yet. So everything we're pretty much doing on our own, on our own penny, on our own, you know, based on our current resources, I'm using my current staff to do a lot of this. So we have to figure out, because right now, it's manageable, and I say that all the time, but at some point, it's going to get pretty hectic. And then the known versus the unknown, this is, this is something that's new to all of us, and a lot of it is based on what we do read. You know, we have to, Dr. Castillo's doing a great job trying to do all the research he can, you know, and I tell everyone, when we had the Zika situation, we had the first case in Texas, we were in the hot zone, so it was easier for us to tell people how to do things, epidemiologists across the state. We could tell health inspectors, you know, what to do, they were expecting for the sanitation, you know, but when we're not in the hot zone, it's very different. And so it's a balancing act of what, you know, what do we know, what do we not know? And so, you know, just a little humor to add my, to end my conversation, but, you know, this is for anti-vaxxers, they, they're a big priority for us right now. They're a big priority for us because if they're not protected, they don't believe in it, their system is completely weak. And so they become, they put themselves in a position where they're going to be affected by this, and so they affect others. And so that's pretty much my presentation. If you have any questions?
This is a good time for me to do a reminder. All of you have touched the door, letting people in and out. The alcohol is there. There are napkins, paper towels. Please open the door handles with one side, not both sides. Just being paranoid.
It's a game changer, you know, and it's one of the things that we have to change our practices. I'm standing here holding, putting my pants, my hands in my jeans because I don't want to have to touch my face. You know, I mean, we're human, we're human, these things happen.
Ms. Guehardo, would you, you want to go ahead and address the island, the two people on the island?
Okay, so we have a situation where...
I think it's already on, I think the county's already issued the press release, and it's already been on the news, but I think it'd be nice for the commissioner to hear it straight from you, what we know about that situation.
Put me on the spot like that, Mayor. No, I'm kidding. So basically, what situation is, we had some individuals that stayed at the island for a couple of months, and while they were at the island, they...
Winter Texans.
It's...
Well, I would call them.
Right, you know, a lot of people, you know, some, but a lot of people think winter Texans, you know, I guess it's, whether to label winter Texans is kind of difficult, because a lot of times, winter Texans, they leave as soon as it gets cold up north, and then they come down. So they were only here for a few months, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
Elderly couple?
Yes. And so, either way, so these individuals were, and they were at South Hyder Island, they were staying there. While they were here for, like I said, a couple of months, while they were here, they went to Idaho for a wedding. While they were in Idaho, they were in contact with one of their family members who tested positive for COVID-19. So by the time they came back the next day, they started, they were showing, they were starting to show symptoms. So they went to the doctor, to the doctor at that point, because the criteria, little by little, has been expanding, but at that point, actually, one of them did go to the doctor, they did not show positive. They were, I'm sorry, they did not have a fever, and so they did not meet the criteria for testing at that point. And so, but they left, but we did, at that point, they did contact our office, the private lab did, I'm sorry, the doctor's lab. They called us, and we advised them, they don't meet the criteria, but of course, self-quarantine, you know, for 14 days, and they did. They actually listened. And so they did self-quarantine, and a week later, they left back to Michigan. Well, when they left to Michigan, their condition got a little worse, and they went to go see a private doctor. They see the doctor, and that's where they were diagnosed over there. And so we're already starting the epidemiological investigation, and basically what we do is we try to find out who the contacts were to that person. And it's kind of difficult to explain this, but we try to identify the closest contacts, and then from there, the ring expands a little until we see that there is really no one that's showing signs or symptoms. We're still in the process of doing that, but fortunately, what really worked to our advantage is that they self-quarantined. And we've been in discussion with the gentleman, the gentleman, so we're hearing firsthand information that we do have. And so that's, but we had to report it because obviously, the right, the public has a right to know. But we're confident that, based on some of the information we have received thus far, that a lot of people are not showing signs or symptoms, so, which is a good sign.
So they did not, they didn't, it appears they did not contract the virus here, and they are now in their home state of Michigan, being treated.
They contracted in Idaho, came here, self-quarantined, and they left.
They may have, their exposure hopefully was limited, and that's what the indications are now, but you all are still investigating that.
Yes, just to make sure, I mean, this is, this is going to be what is going to be the most time-consuming of all of this, is trying to find out if someone does test positive, who they've been around and to what extent.
Okay, I'm just going to add a few more, just to add a few more things from the call at 5:00. The cases have gone from a week ago in Texas to 21 people tested positive in seven counties to now over 100 cases and three deaths. And so that's partly a result of advanced spread, but also has to be attributed partly to more accessibility to testing and more testing. So how much of it is really spread, and how much of it is just availability of testing? I don't know. Governor said that 15,000 to 20,000 tests, they'd be able to do 15,000 to 20,000 tests per week, and that that number is going to continue to ramp up. I think we still are confident that the grocery stores are going to stay open and that there's going to be supplies getting to people. We do want to keep the restaurants, as I said earlier, open as part of the food supply chain. They have their, they have their own sources for getting food. Those are, but we want to have pickup, takeout, or delivery on those things. We want the governor also stress the importance of abiding by the CDC standards, and that the failure to do that, failure to arrest the spread, may result in further action by the federal government or increased standards by the CDC.
Yes, sir. And, you know, and like I said, I commend City of Harlingen, Austin, for the setup here. You know, I think that's the only way we can do this, taking proactive stance, and so that people can realize how serious this is.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Josh or Esmer or Gabe?
Do we know anything about, as far as let's say somebody that's infected and they touched something, do we know how long the germ will last out in the, I'm just curious?
You know, there's different reports, but like they say, like about 48 hours. I, you know, it varies, that's information.
It's also depending on the condition.
Yes.
The environment of the conditions, like the case of infection, or the infected person touched something.
Or the heat too, you know, that's one of the issues that we're...
There are a lot of studies out, there are a lot of studies out there now, but, you know, who knows if they're really accurate.
That the best thing to do is to disinfect.
There are studies out there that will tell you, different surfaces will, you know, retain the virus for a longer period of time. So regardless of that, it's important to, what they've been saying from the beginning is everybody needs to wash their hands, try to keep, and for me, trying to keep my hand off my face is just like trying to keep the ocean from lapping up against the beach. It's just not going to happen. That's, my hand is going to go to my face. So the only thing I know that I can do personally is to try to wash my hands as often as I can. to try to wash my hands as often as I can. So I think that's probably a good, good rule. Any other questions?
The questions that I get are, are there any reports in our sister cities in Mexico? Because we're, we're getting the reports of what's going on in Texas. We know the closest to us is gonna be Austin, San Antonio area. But Reynosa, Matamoros, do we know of any cases there?
Well, you know, Josh touched on it, that the state epidemiologist sends us that information, and we also have contact with the local individuals, but, and they let us know. Of course, there's always the issue, if we don't have the testing capability. You know, I imagine Mexico probably has even more so limited. And so, the numbers, it's based on what they report, and I believe your slide had that information.
My federal government contact, two days ago, said there was an active case in Reynosa.
Does the state of Tamaulipas state report one case in Reynosa?
Okay.
May I ask a question on the people that were sent initially from the get-go to San Antonio? Have they been treated and released, or they're still under quarantine?
No, they've all been cleared. The initial ones from the very get-go, from the get-go, yes.
Yeah, so they, they were there, and, like, they were in Texas, but they've been released and back home, or whatever.
Right. Okay.
The couple from Idaho-
The ones that tested positive were recovered, and no one else, no one else contracted it, have all been released. So that's all really good news.
Yes.
The, the couple from Idaho, you said that they're being treated back home, but they're still investigating the place where they stayed to make sure everything's been clean? Is that already, is that process still going on, or is, it's already been taken care of?
We just, we were just made aware, we, we were made aware this last night, that there was a possibility. We reached out to city, to Michigan last night, the hospital, the public health, we got that information. It was confirmed today. We were working with the city at South Ponder Island, and, and the property owners, to make sure that the, that the condo is, is, is disinfected.
So no spring breakers in their room?
You know, and my understanding, these are privately owned condos?
Yeah.
And so it's individuals that owned them, and if they wanted, chose to rent it to someone, it was, it was not, or, they had a lot of people, it was, my understanding was very quiet, a condo, condo unit.
Thank you very much for, for your presentation or participating. I appreciate, you know, all the work you're doing. I know that's gotta be like crazy, you know?
No.
We're sure you're, we're sure you're tired as well, and you probably want to get back.
Yeah, I, I think I sleep pretty deep from the virus these days.
We're gonna let you go now. Thank you. Thank you very much.
But I'm here, you know, if y'all have any questions at any point, our department's here, I'm here, I'm only phone calling.
All right. We appreciate all the support that you guys are giving to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna go to item-
I just want to add one thing, Mayor, that this virus is an evolving virus daily, and there's more cases showing up daily. So this is gonna progress, continue, be very active. So it's not the end of it. So, we just want to make sure that our citizens follow the recommendations that we're pushing out, and follow the guidelines that CDC is putting out for, for all of us to follow. That's, that's all.
And just to add to it, the calls that I've gotten, I've told them that we need to exercise calm, we need to be vigilant as to what the environment that we're around. And then I said, the very bottom line, I said, Facebook is wonderful for social, but it's not always accurate.
Correct.
I said, go to our city website. We are posting things that are happening. Go to the county website, there's things that are being posted there as to what's actually going on. And, and until you read it there, it's, it's not gospel.
That's right.
And so, I, I do commend what the city staff is doing right now, to make sure all this is happening. And thank you for the report, guys, and stay safe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, item 12, consideration possible action to approve ordinance, the first reading to repeal ordinance 2012 dash 7, designated no parking zone, south side of Harrison Avenue, 46 foot west of the intersection of 11th Street.
Good evening, Mayor.
Nice to go back to something that we can control.
Parking zones.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman. This request was presented to staff due to the need for additional street parking for 1,022 East Harrison, located at the corner of Harrison Avenue and 11th Street. Staff verified this concern with an onsite inspection of the area and determined the removal of the no parking zone, which was established by ordinance 12 dash 07, is feasible. A request to solicit feedback to the proposition was sent to properties within a 200-foot radius. No dispositive responses were received. The removal of the no parking zone will be removed from the south side of Harrison Avenue, 46 feet we, west of the intersection of 11th Street, as outlined in your packet. No objections have been received by fire or PD.
Okay. Can I ask the city attorney to read the caption, please?
In ordinance to repeal ordinance 12-7, and remove the no parking zone on the south side of Harrison, that'd be 46 feet west of the intersection of 11th Street, providing for publication, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item 13, consideration possible action to negotiate a request for qualifications 2020-03, with a qualified firm for professional surveying services for Loop 499 Sidewalk Project, and authorize city manager to enter into professional services contract.
On December 22nd, 2019, the city issued a request for qualifications for firms to provide professional surveying services for the Loop 499 Sidewalks Project. This project is the plan specifications and estimate phase of the project, and is part of a grant awarded under the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program with the Texas Department of Transportation. The PSNE phase will consist of the study, design, and development of plans for the addition of a new six-foot wide sidewalk, as shown in the attached map. As stated in the RFQ, firms must have experience in surveying and right-of-way mapping, right-of-way acquisition, horizontal and vertical control surveying, utility location, route surveying, aerial surveying, design survey, subdivision plaits, and land easement acquisitions. Six firms responded to the RFQ and were evaluated using the criteria identified in the packet. Based in this criteria, the highest three firms were ranked, and issued a request for a technical proposal, which did not include a cost, and asked to elaborate on their technical capabilities for the project. Negotiations will begin with a top-ranked firm, and if agreement cannot be made, negotiations with the next firm on the list will begin.
Okay. So, the recommenda, the recommendation is to negotiate with the top-ranked firm?
Correct. To, to, to begin the negotiation project, process.
To negotiate with the top-ranked firm. Is there a mo-
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item 14, consideration possible action, negotiate a request for qualifications 2020-04, with a qualified firm for professional environmental services for Loop 499 Sidewalk Project, and authorize the city manager to enter into professional services contract. And you can just say ditto?
Ditto with environmental.
Okay. I'm opposed to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item 15, board appointments. Are there any board appointments?
I have none, sir.
I have one, Mayor. Mr. Bettis, but, I can't remember his first name, so, but I, can I just do it next week, or can I just confirm the name with city secretary?
Yeah, is Mr. Pett, is it, yeah, I can give her the rest of the info.
Okay, so, I'll do that.
For what board?
P and Z, planning's on me, yeah. And he's been recommended, so.
Who?
It's one, it's, it, I, it's the brother Charlie Bettis. I can't-
Oh, brother Charlie. I don't know his name.
Luis, the late Luis Bettis. He's got two sons from Friendly Insurance.
Okay.
And I know one of them is Luis.
Friendly Insurance?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, it one of those boys?
Yeah, I think it's Charlie Bettis, or, I'll find out, but I'll get it.
Objection.
Okay. Any other appointments? All right. Is there a motion to appoint?
Sub move.
Second.
All, approved, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item 16, executive closed session, of five items. A, attorney-client consultation under section 551.0712, Texas Government Code, seek legal advice regarding the city's legal duties and obligations surrounding the appointment of a Harlingen Municipal Court Judge. And B, attorney-client consultation regarding 551.0712, Texas Government Code, seek legal advice and updates in regards to City of Harlingen Code ordinances, 111, zoning, Article 18, Section 111, 509, three signs and regulations with the downtown district. And let's, since we're gonna go into executive session, let's take up 21, closed executive session, attorney-client consultation regarding section 551.0712, Texas Government Code, seek legal advice regarding the health emergency situation due to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Motion to go into executive session, all those items.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to meet with our attorney in the closed executive session for legal advice. We'll be back, and there may be item, and there may be action on these items.
I'm back, Mayor.
Okay, we're back in executive session, 753, or, we're back in open session, 753, and we're gonna go to item 17, which is consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to solicit applications for the position of municipal court judge for the City of Harlingen, Texas.
Mayor Commissioners, I recommend that we begin the process of requesting applicants for the position of municipal court judge, and go through that process and bring back a recommendation to the city commission in the future meeting.
Is there a motion to approve that action?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed. Item 18, consideration possible action to approve and adopt an ordinance. And second, final reading amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinance, Chapter 111, zoning, Article 18, Section 111, 509, three signs, by amending the sign regulations with the downtown district overlay for properties along the state highway.
Mayor Commissioners, staff recommend the approval of the amendment with one correction, that it be amended at 35 feet, not 30, against staff's recommend the approval.
And read the caption, please.
The ordinance, the city of Harlingen Code, ordinance is chapter 111, zoning, Article 18, Section 111, 509, three signs, by amending the sign regulations for the downtown district overlay, for properties along the state highway, providing for publication, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Sub moved.
Second.
All right. We have motion, second, adopt the ordinance, on final reading. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item 19, consideration possible action extending the declaration of local disaster propagated by Mayor Chris Boswell, March 17, 2020, pertaining to public health emergency arising out of, public health issues arising out of the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, and adopting public health and safety guidelines authorized under Chapter 21 of Texas Health and Safety Code. Is there, is there a motion to adopt the declaration?
Motion to adopt.
All, all those in favor say aye.
And maybe a reading of the caption would be for the benefit of the public, Mayor, before you, final vote, if I may?
Read the caption.
The, the resolution of the City of Harlingen Board of Commissioners and Mayor extending local disaster declaration, adopting public health and safety guidelines, appointing a qualified health authority, providing for suspension of TOMA rules as authorized by the Texas Attorney General, and delegating administrative authority to the city manager for the purpose of addressing any evolving emergency situations within the city limits during the pendency of the disaster declaration.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I don't, made the motion.
And second.
Okay. Motion in the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then, the last item is item 20, consideration possible action to approve a resolution, which, kind of already, a resolution appointing a health authority under Chapter 121, Subchapter B of the Texas Health and Safety Code. The same, well, no, we're gonna, we're gonna appoint Michael T. Mola-Hoon, board certified in internal medicine and emergency medicine, to serve in, in that, in the capacity stated in the resolution.
As health authority.
And he will work in tandem with our current health director, Josh Ramirez, to be able to have further capabilities for us to make decisions and to do the things that we need to do during this emergency. And so we, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I ask a question? Is that a, in simple, is he getting, are we gonna compensate him before he's, does he get paid for his time, or?
There, there would be no compensation. Doctor had agreed just to help the City of Harlingen.
Okay, great.
He may change his mind after he sees it on Facebook.
See, makes me think.
But he has agreed, he's agreed to serve, and so we, we appreciate his, his agreement to serve, and we're gonna try to swear him in tomorrow.
Go get him right now.
Motion in the second.
We do have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting, and we appreciate everyone's patience during this time, and the changes to our meeting processes. But, you know, we will get through this, and we'll all get through it, and we'll all be in good health. So please be safe and be careful. Where it's at.